We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Vote by roll call?
Second.
Yep, sorry. Yeah. Now we'll vote by roll call.
Are we, if we're all here, we don't need to do them.
Well, it's true. Yeah, we don't have to. I don't think, yes, since we're mostly present, so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. The other one's not here is Derek. Okay. All right. So the agenda is approved? Um, we have to vote. Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Um, presentations, qualifications and visitors. I have one visitor signed up. Um, did you want to?
And we just want our speakers to go ahead and give their name and address for the record. And then you can.
My name is Katie Wallace. I live at nine twenty-four Hybriker Loop in Omsdell. And I'm here to do a couple of things. And the first is I'm a member of the Omsdell Exchange Club. And I wanted to say because of your support and I'm speaking on behalf of our club members, thank you for all the support you've given us. We've had done the children's Christmas shop this year. We had, last year we did, it was our first time. We had thirty-seven children come. This year we had eighty-six children come. And they fed over a hundred people pancakes and sausage and cooked by our member Ron Harding and his wife. And it was enjoyed by all. And I even snuck a couple home and stuck them in the freezer for another day and we enjoyed them further. So that was our first event for December. It's just for December. And then the uh, party at the, or the, sorry, I was nervous. Like Christmas in the park. We had volunteers all over the place doing that. And that was really fun because I they had costumes and I think I was Mrs. Santa Claus from what I I had a really cute picture with me and my granddaughter was Santa. So that was a lot of fun. We had a lot of people come through. Yeah, there seemed like a lot of people in the park that really enjoyed it. I always miss the lighting of the tree, but maybe next year I'll get that one. And today I delivered quite a few packages to the, I think it's called the Parent Resource Center at Omsdell Elementary for our Christmas family that we adopted. And so my car was full of presents for all those kids that will be getting those gifts. And that was kind of heartwarming to see their facility and what they do and learn a little bit about it while I was there. And then I think that's pretty much it for our December, except for we will be handing out flags to those in attendance tomorrow at the dedic, is it a dedication for the Veterans Memorial? And so because of you, we were able to do this. And our volunteers, um, we've actually added three new members this past month. So that's really good because we're starting to, people are recognizing us. So that's a good thing. And so also on behalf of myself, and I'm sure the community too, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for the putting on the festival, for doing the parade, for all the volunteer work, for having Santa Claus walk those mini miles. And it was just really fun. And the grandkids really enjoyed seeing that. So I just want to say thank you for all you do.
I think it should be the other way around.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to, if there's no other visitors, um, move on to consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So now we move on to the public hearings at Quilker. All right. So we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting and we'll go ahead and start that at how is it? Seven oh six P M?
All right. And I will go ahead and begin with a staff report. So this is a public hearing for development ordinance amendments. I'm trying to find my staff report. I guess I should have. There we go. Uh, and just a little history through, uh, one of the things that uh, we have done and decided to do as a council is to some extent, uh, we want to make our development ordinance somewhat of a living document. We want to constantly be revisiting it, looking for areas that make sense to maintain to meet our vision. So we don't want to drastically change our development ordinance. But we do want to look for ways to strengthen the language in it, uh, to make it easier to implement and understand. And then we also look for those things that come forward that really make sense in the community. And we've been doing that. Uh, we've made, uh, since the adoption of this code in two thousand and twenty, we've made two revisions to the development ordinance. And it's, it's quite time consuming. It, it takes several months of planned effort to actually implement revisions in the development code because of all the noticing requirements and the hearings that we have to do. We also have to have this heard in front of the planning commission before the council. And we've had a lot, a lot of small little tweaks, but what kind of facilitated the timing of this was uh, measure one oh nine. Uh, and part of that discussion of, of putting putting that issue out to voters was if it, if it's approved, if uh, psilocybin mushrooms were approved in the community, do we have land use regulations to accommodate it? And of course we didn't because it's a new thing. So that kind of started the discussion. And then of course, we decided to look at the marijuana issue again. So that started the discussion. Now neither of those issues passed. Um, and so they're, they're not included in the development ordinances amendments. But of course they're in our files for if we end up visiting them again sometime in the future. So that works, um, you know, somewhat ready to go. Uh, so that was what started, uh, the chain of events that led to this particular update. But since we were here, uh, and we've done the notice and we've done the hearings, we decided we should go through and make some of those tweaks uh, that we're looking at. And most of the changes in the, in the development ordinance are related to definitions. So where we've just tweaked the wording of the definitions a little bit so that they were more clear and more definable to people that read them. So one of the things that we have oftentimes when we're dealing with folks at the counter and it could be frustrating for us um, is they want to take words and kind of try to apply those to their situation. And so we want to try to have as clean and as plain language as we, as we can. Um, so that we're implementing it as good of ten. Uh, so there's a number of definition changes. I won't, I won't go through them. There's several there. Accessory dwelling units and accessory structures. We just wanted to change or make sure that we distinguish between the two. One is actually a place that you would live in and the other one might be like something for storage or some other type of use other than dwelling. So we wanted to clearly define those. Hazardous material merchandise. We wanted to clearly define that, um, because we've had a few folks that have inquired about having home occupation businesses, but they were dealing with hazardous type material. And we wanted to make sure that we clearly defined that wasn't a use that would go into a residential area, even under a home occupation. That probably wouldn't be appropriate. One of the things we did take out of the definitions was, uh, uh, RVs out of local home parks. We've not allowed uh, dwellings in RVs for many years. And somehow that's some old language uh, that just kept getting recycled over and over again. And we just happened to come across it. Uh, that was one, one of the things. So tho- those account for most of those, uh, particular changes. Um, the one thing that we also did is we, uh, in two thousand and twenty, we adopted a uh, a new process called a type one A to make it easier for folks that had existing buildings to do an administrative approval versus having to go through the public hearing process. That was something the council approved as a streamlined method to, uh, to get folks in and out of vacant buildings uh, a little easier. Um, and, uh, we wanted to take out the notice requirement for things like in updating your landscaping in our old code that still had to go through a, uh, notice of a hundred residents or a hundred foot radius of residents and it had to do, you had to do a fourteen, uh, day public notice, published notice, uh, um, period and stuff like that. And that just didn't, that seemed fairly excessive for landscaping. So we took that out. We just put that in the administrative approval uh, section. Uh, so we did that. So the, these are, again, all of these are just small little updates in the landscaping section. Uh, council talked about this earlier this year where they had wanted to allow artificial turf as an alternative to regular turf. That was one of the things we had on our list and we memorialized that in this change. That is probably uh, one of the, the greatest change in this, in this, uh, uh, update. We took Ivy out as a, as a, uh, preferred ground cover. And again, it may have just been low old language. Uh, thirty years ago Ivy may have been an acceptable ground cover. Today it's really seen it more as an invasive ground cover. And there's a lot of things that's probably much more appropriate that folks could use. So we just took that word out, uh, of there. And then under, uh, uh, accessory, uh, structures, uh, we're really wanting folks to cite accessory structures in the backyards. Um, but there are some exceptions to those. Uh, and, and one exception that we wrote into the code the last time was if you're on a corner lot, because on a corner lot, you don't have a backyard. You have a front yard and two side yards. And so we wrote an exception and we just wanted to expand that to just say if you don't have a backyard or if your backyard's narrower than twenty feet, um, that we'll look at an alternative location. And we have a resident, there's not many properties that fit in that box. Um, but there is a few residents that have these very uniquely shaped properties. Now they could come in and go through the process uh, to apply for a variance because of their unique shaped lot. Um, but it really doesn't make sense to run them through an expensive process. Um, if we've already got an exception for folks with a narrow uh, backyard. So we just basically said if your yard's shorter than twenty feet, we'll look at a non-streetside um, location. Uh, and those are the significant changes. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I think it's all bulleted there for you in the staff report. Um, but if you have any questions about any of the updates, I'm happy to go through this.
I don't have any questions. Is anybody else? We just need to make a motion to read by title only. Is that correct?
Pardon me?
Are we making motions to read by?
Yeah, it's on the back of the staff.
Yeah. And I think you would ask if there's any public testimony and then we'll close the public hearing and then council, if council can make a motion.
Uh, any public testimony or comments? Seeing none, um, close the public hearing. If there's none, we'll close it at seven fifteen P M. Okay. And then council deliberations. None? We just need an action.
I move to approve the first reading by title only of ordinance number seven eleven and ordinance amending ordinance number seven oh five, the development ordinance as presented by staff.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. And now go to the second one.
I move to approve the second reading by title only and adopt ordinance number seven eleven and ordinance amending ordinance number seven oh five, the development ordinance as presented by staff.
We all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I think that's it. We move on to old business. No old business, new business?
And this is actually a public hearing because it's an ordinance. So we would go through, basically we'd open the public hearing and that's the thing.
So let's reopen the public hearing at seven sixteen P M.
Oh, this was the one. This isn't the, okay.
Okay. So no public hearings.
My apologies. Okay. So this is ordinance seven twelve. And, um, what this is, is, uh, to uh, extend the, uh, Pacific Corp, Pacific Power uh, franchise agreement for one year. Uh, the franchise agreement ended, uh, I believe it was August thirty-first of this year. And at the time we came forward with an ordinance to extend it to the end of the year so we could complete negotiations on an updated contract or uh, do any updates we needed to do to the franchise agreement. And really we just haven't been able to get to it. There just hasn't uh, been a lot of time in there. And so, uh, we're asking council if they would extend that franchise agreement by this action, uh, until December thirty-first of twenty-three. And that'll give us adequate time to review the agreement and make any necessary changes. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have no questions. You guys have questions? Get an action.
I, uh, move to approve first read of ordinance number seven twelve and ordinance extending the franchise agreement granted to Pacific Core D B A Pacific Power via ordinance six nineteen and declaring an emergency as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Move on to the second reading.
Move to approve second reading and adoption of ordinance number seven twelve and ordinance extending franchise granted to Pacific Core D B A Pacific Power via ordinance six nineteen and declaring an emergency as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Task four. Addition to the preliminary engineering report and environmental proposal with West Tech Engineering.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll give a little background, uh, on this. So, uh, as council knows, we've tasked our, uh, city engineer with putting together the, uh, pre-engineering and environmental reports, uh, for our wastewater treatment facility. And we, uh, have been seeking out grants, uh, trying to get some of the needed, the needed funds through some of the, uh, grants that are available. But we've also been on a dual track where we've been trying to look for the best possible funding avenues, uh, in the event that we, uh, end up having to fund this project at some point. Uh, and one of those funding sources that are very favorable uh, is USDA. And one of the reasons why it's favorable is until the, uh, latest census, uh, our community fell within a low to moderate income uh, uh, designation. And, uh, because we are a low to moderate income community and we're under an enforcement action by a D E Q. So there's an urgency, uh, to the, uh, upgrades that we have to do. Uh, and we're considered a, a distressed community. Uh, the federal USDA program has certain grant incentives. Now, we don't know what those things will be until we ultimately get a funding package. But it's certainly the most favorable funding source that we have available to us. And so we needed to get our applications in, uh, for a particular deadline, which was going to be the cutoff where USDA was going to adopt the new census data. Uh, we did get everything into USDA and we submitted a complete application and they accepted it. And then they started a review of the application. Uh, and then, uh, USDA informed us that we needed to do a more detailed environmental review of our wastewater, uh, facility location for a couple of reasons. Uh, some of our facility, uh, are, areas are in floodway uh, designated areas. And, uh, and so we did an environmental study before the application, but they wanted some specific, uh, studies done. And now we're in a race against a new timeline because even though we met the old timeline, this, uh, request basically considered our application incomplete. Uh, at the same time, the federal government is still going through organization um, challenges and they've decided not to accept the new census until next, until a, a date after the first of the year. So all of these things are very fluid and they're changing, but the upshot of it is we need to do a deeper environmental review to meet the standards USDA is requesting. It's a sixteen thousand, six hundred dollar add-on to our current, uh, contract. Um, and we're, we're trying to race the clock. So we're trying to get this done before, uh, February. And so we've got new challenges. It's, it's very, uh, it's very beneficial for the city to get into this, lock into this funding mechanism if, if it's at all possible. And, uh, with your approval, we'll expand the contract to include those items requested by USDA. Happy to answer your questions. I know that was a long-winded version, but I felt like it needed a greater explanation considering what's transpired with it. So.
The Ron is like maybe, uh, more in-depth like samples, water samples. I mean, kind of what, what does that feature exactly? I mean?
Uh, well, I didn't bring that memo with me from them, uh, specifically on the detailed tasks that they had to do, but, um.
Has a lot to do with looking at the flood maps from what I read.
Yeah. If you, if you look at the West Tech, uh, uh, report for their contract request, yeah, it basically says that they're looking at uh, determining the floodplain water surface elevations, uh, mode, the flood, floodplain and vicinity of the, to the vicinity of the proposed treatment uh, facility. And then obviously there would have to, based on that information, they might have to make alterations to the, uh, treatment plant design. That could be done in the engineering phase. We just need the environmental study and conclusions so that USDA can make sure that the facility can be actually cited there.
Thank you.
We just need a motion. If you guys don't have any more questions.
Move to approve the new not-to-exceed fee of ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-three from West Tech for the addition of task four to the P E R and environmental proposal as presented by staff.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I know it seems like a lot of money, uh, but when we're talking about a twenty-five million dollar facility uh, to get an application in for ninety-eight thousand dollars, uh, it's not a small amount of money, but in this scheme of things, especially if we could be getting five or six million dollars in grants, it's well worth the investment. So.
Help get us over the top. Hey, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and ten maps they're working under, I think, right now? Like it's, I know, I know some times elapsed, but yeah, I think it's around that time.
I, I think the maps have been updated, but I think the FEMA's actually done some updates to the map since then, but the, the difficulty is, is anytime that you're in a floodplain designated area, depending on the agency that you're applying for, they want very specific data points. And that's not going to be found in the overall FEMA. So.
Geology and water table and all that stuff's changed since then. So, yeah.
Moving on to administrative report.
All right. So in your packet, you have your review of checks, uh, your public works report and your police department report. And I don't know if you have any questions for any of those. If not, I'll move on to my report. Um, our electronic, uh, communication center is up and running. You can see it right here on front of the building. And it's been up and running for a week. Our staff's been doing a great job programming little messages and animations. I think our meeting was programmed out there tonight. And it's, it's actually, uh, they're having fun with it. And I think it's great for the community to drive by to be able to see those messages. It also does community service announcements. So it's got the time and the temperature and stuff like that. Um, during events, when we have events, and it seems like we've had a lot lately, right? Uh, but hopefully there'll be fewer further between, but when there are events, we'll be able to, uh, put messages out to the community. Sometimes we have broken channels of communication, um, with power or cell phones. That's connected to this facility. It's generated, um, and unless we lose cell service, which we should not because our cell, uh, service providers are generating their facilities now. They've installed generators. Uh, we should be able to program messages in there during all of those types of events. Uh, and so, uh, yeah, it'll be a great communication tool as we get further into utilizing it and finding out all of its features. I'm sure we'll have recommendations and, um, other things that we come back to the community and, or to the council and talk about. Uh, the project's completed from the contract side. Uh, the only thing that needs to be completed is some la- new landscaping out front. And, uh, of course we'll wait until spring when there's more of a variety of plants and things for us to take advantage of. And then we'll get that planted, that that's done. Uh, our contractor finished insulating mods, uh, inside of the building. Now we didn't, we planned to insulate mods at some point in the future. We didn't plan to do it this year, but when we called in our final inspection with the county, um, uh, they, they wanted it insulated and covers put on and stuff like that. They wanted it, they, they're looking at it more of a commercial building and not a park building. And so they wanted some of these things before they signed off on it. So we went ahead and, um, initiated that work. And even though it's one agency in the county, uh, that we're dealing with, we do get a fifteen thousand dollar community prosperity grant from another division of the county, the Commissioners, uh, Community Prosperity, um, Fund. And that's what we're going to use to fund that with. Uh, so we had to do that. We will be covering the walls because we're not going to just leave it insulated in plastic. Uh, so we'll be putting drywall on at some point when we have time. Uh, our service memorial, uh, you may have seen it, but the dedication is tomorrow. Um, people have been admiring it. It's been getting lots of buzz. So we expect maybe we'll have a good attendance tomorrow. Uh, and, um, it's, it's all done. So it's ready to go. Other than, again, some landscaping in that little flagpole area, which we'll do this summer with, um, our, our idea is to put in, uh, summer blooming flowers through that planter strip and not necessarily worry about winter shrubs uh, there. Uh, and so that'll be an ongoing, uh, project. Uh, our water reservoir emergency generator, uh, we're still waiting on the generator. All the infrastructure's in, so that project's done. Uh, unfortunately with the supply chain issues that we've had, uh, the generators taking a while to get here. Um, but it's, uh, the project's virtually complete except for the physical location of that generator system. Uh, so, uh, that's, we're still on hold. As council knows, you have, uh, two vacancies. Uh, one was a resignation. Uh, and we've spent the last few months collecting applications. Uh, we have two applications, uh, right now. Um, and then because there, nobody signed up for one council seat, uh, there is a vacant council seat. Now there was a uh, there is a vacant council seat. Now there was a write-in campaign. Um, the person who got the most votes declined that position. And so, uh, the way that it's basically set up is council will declare a vacancy after the first of the year. And then you can appoint, um, a person into that position as well. And so you do have two applications. Uh, you'll be able to appoint somebody at the first meeting in January. Uh, and then declare the vacancy. And then you've got to point the second position at the second meeting in January, if that's what you choose to do. Uh, pointing council members is there's no rules to it. It's really however you guys want to proceed. Uh, so you, you just have to provide us guidance on how you want to proceed. Um, and then we do have a meeting tour with, uh, representative-elect, uh, Ed Dell on the twentieth. Um, at ten AM, we're going to meet here at city hall. Uh, if any council members want to take that tour with us, uh, I encourage you to do that. I think it would be really good. Uh, if you don't and you want to take a tour, if that's not a good day, but you want a tour anyway, I, I would really love the opportunity to get you out, look at the facilities and be able to visually explain some of the challenges we're dealing with when it comes to our wastewater uh, facility. So we're happy to do that. Uh, just get with us. But we do, we are doing a, a tour with our representative. And, um, Angie's, uh, been meeting, uh, the mayor's been meeting with various elected representatives. Uh, we continue to do that to talk about our needs uh, with our wastewater facility. But there's also other opportunities. I think the, um, Mid Willamette Valley Council of Government has a legislative day that you can sign up for and attend. Uh, if you show
He does as well.
Choose to, yep. Okay, good. And then LLC in January has a legislative day that you can sign up. And I think Colleen's been sending you all that correspondence. That would be up to you to sign up for uh, on your own, but it's, it's easy. It's just a simple email uh, to those agencies if you want to participate. And really the message is, you know, we're a small community. This is a requirement of DEQ, uh, and it's, it's really, really difficult for our community to remain an affordable community uh, for folks, uh, unless we get some assistance. Um, so, and that's really the message. Key talking voice there. Uh, we, uh, completed our city financial audit and I did receive the draft financial audit report. Uh, typically we'll get a, uh, signed uh, copy for each of council in January. So I'm expecting that the first meeting in January. Uh, but the draft report is good, good, sound financial policies. Uh, all of our finances look good according to the auditor. Uh, so it looks like another, another good year. And I think you can see that when you look at our, um, when you look at our yearly balance sheets, uh, you know, from they continue to improve each year or so. Future dates to be aware of, uh, the second meeting in February. No, so typically state of the city, second meeting in February. It's usually the second meeting in January. I may have misprinted that. Um, I typically do our state of the city, the second meeting in January.
In January.
Uh, and I like to do that and kind of sum up where we are, our challenges and, uh, some of the things we're thinking about, uh, from a staff level. Uh, to, to give you some things to think about when we go into our yearly retreat. Uh, and talking about our goals and things that we need and any policy changes. Uh, so I kind of like to do that before. So yeah, it'll be the second meeting in January. And, um, you know, we've done a lot as a community. Uh, and the last couple of years, really, uh, there's no better example. Uh, I mean, just all the projects were, we've just completed. These are, these are a lot of projects for a small city like ours. So we've got a lot of stuff going on. And, you know, we continue to just try to pick away at those goals and the things council wants us to work on. And, you know, the big picture ones like the sewer treatment facility, I know it seems almost unobtainable, but you know, we'll keep, we got to get there. I mean, we don't really have a choice. So we will figure it out. We will get there and we'll get there in the best way with the, uh, mi- most minimum effect to our community as, as possible. But we will get there. Uh, and then um, we should discuss, uh, at, at the January ninth meeting. I'd like the council, we'll have our, and hopefully we'll have one new council member appointed. But I'd like to start thinking about a retreat date. And I'm thinking probably the end of March. Uh, in that area. So if you can bring your calendars and have some days identified, we'd like to try to schedule that.
In the March of spring break for schools.
Okay.
Keep that in mind.
Well, I mean, you know, it could be third week of March, it could be the first week of April, it's whatever. I just want to start thinking about a time frame for you, for you guys, uh, to put that together because we'll have to it'll take a little bit for us to put the retreat together. Uh, and that's all I have. Unless you have any other questions, happy to answer those.
Moving on to mayor and council reports. I, I'm not going to be at the event tomorrow. So if you guys, I always encourage everyone to show up to city events, but um, other than that, is there anyone else that has anything to share?
I'll be there.
Good to the order? Anything for good to the order? We have no correspondence. Oh, we do?
Census. Notice of our preliminary population estimate.
Which is?
Four thousand, two hundred and twelve.
I just want to go on the record and say that I was right. I've been arguing with Derek about that. I was guessing about forty-two hundred people. He kept on saying more. Was right. Um, and then that's, that's it. If we don't have anything else, we can adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-seven.